I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie the Wolfco, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salvido.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeHore.
Here.
Before we start, we have some recognition from over at the wastewater plant.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Brandon Hobing and I'm with the National Weather Service out of Grand Rapids. And we oversee forecasts and warnings for 23 counties in West Michigan. And in my capacity, I oversee the Volunteer Weather Observer Network. It's made up of about 8,000 volunteers nationally, including the city of Lowell Wastewater Plant. And they measure daily precipitation and snowfall and submit reports once per day to the National Weather Service. And they've been doing that for 50, going on 51 years, so since 1972. And an interesting bit of information for everybody here is that we have official observations in the city of Lowell that go back to 1915. So we had private citizens and others that took daily weather reports and submitted them on an official basis. And the water plant picked that up in 1972. So these reports are used for a variety of things. They inform weather forecasts, they help the National Weather Service verify public warnings and statements that are issued for the Lowell area. They serve as official records for the city. So when we talk about official rainfall, official snowfall measurements for Lowell, that comes from the wastewater plant. And Brian Vandermeulen and Cody Chambers have been helping that, helping out with that effort for many years. And so we very much appreciate your efforts for keeping that going. So taken over many years, that helps determine the area's climate. That's a critical piece of information that we need in West Michigan. And this data is also used to help with engineering assessments, environmental impact assessments, agricultural planning, crop risk insurance assessment. Everybody knows we're going into a drought, we've been very dry. That information, that daily information is very helpful to inform that as well. So that's the daily observation side with rain and snow, but they also measure the Grand River level. And I will turn it over to Andy Dixon, our hydrologist for the National Weather Service, to just add a few thoughts.
Yes, thank you, Brandon. Yeah, I am the hydrologist for the National Weather Service office in Grand Rapids. And one of the responsibilities that our office has is modeling and warning the public and our key partners about impending flooding and the severity of impending flooding. Well, anybody who is familiar with any type of modeling at all will know that any kind of forecast, whether it's weather forecast or river forecast, is only as good as the availability of quality observations. And so as if, as if the plant didn't have enough going on measuring the what, the weather every day, they, they took on the responsibility in June of 2002 to start measuring the water level at the bridge near the fairgrounds during high water events and at other key times throughout the year. So that means there's now two plus decades of reliable river observations as well. And so you might wonder what happens to those? Not only do they, they go to our website that everybody's probably familiar with of keeping track of, of, okay, what's the water doing? Obviously Lowell is a city that is profoundly affected by, by the rivers. But this information also goes directly back to our River Forecast Center in the Minneapolis area. And, and I want to underscore that even more impressive than the fact that they collect the observations is that they do it on the river probably during the times when the operational tempo at the plant is the busiest as well. So truly, we appreciate everything you guys have done. We couldn't do our job nearly as well without you. And I just want to make one final broader point. Not only does the river observation benefit the community of Lowell, but really they're providing a public service not only to Lowell, but to the entire West Michigan community on the Grand River downstream. I talked this last week to the, to the modelers that look at this all the time at our River Forecast Center. And they use the Grand River levels between Ionia and Lowell to calibrate the forecast and really dial in the forecast for the entire downriver community. So that would include very vulnerable communities like Comstock Park, Grand Rapids, and all the way down into Otto County. So really, your volunteerism and your dedication reflects incredibly well, not only on you, but it serves Lowell and the entire West Michigan community. So thank you very much.
And if we want to have, you know, perhaps the mayor or city manager, they want to come up and get in on this photo and do a little celebrating here, 50 years of observations, Brian and Hobing. Go up there? Yep, sure, yep. A little more space. Over there, oh yeah. Don't want you to feel excluded over there. Well, great. Thank you very much.
Brian, are you leaving?
I am.
You're supposed to say something.
What am I supposed to say? I was saying I'm 50 years old.
Motion for the consent agenda for tonight that has the closed section minutes in it as well.
I'll make that motion.
Support. Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeHore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salvido.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Yeah, right. Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, congratulations, that's awesome, about this new award, so we're glad for that. Good evening, my name is Shannon Hanley and I'm here tonight along with most of the other board members to represent Lowell Pride. This past Saturday was the third annual Lowell Pride event. So we wanted to make sure that we made an appearance tonight so we could personally thank the city council and the chamber, particularly the police department for the assistance we received this past weekend. We did have a very successful event where we estimate we had somewhere around 3,000 attendees show up throughout the day. We had just a couple minor medical issues that were quickly resolved despite the blazing heat on Saturday. Lots of water and sunscreen were used, but mostly we stayed unsunburned. Whether you attended the kids' dance party, poetry readings, musical performances, keynotes, or the Tai Chi session to center yourself, there was a wealth of acceptance and connection. And it is in that connection and community that we create change. It is during those events that people see that they aren't alone in their beliefs and they aren't alone in expressing who they are and they are accepted just as they are. We were interrupted for a time by some protesters who were trying to shout over our performers and disrupt our main stage events. But we were able to make some scheduling adjustments and with the police help, we were able to solve that problem quickly. We were blessed to have so many volunteers and security members from the community who really helped us pull off this successful event. It was wonderful working with them as well as more than 75 vendors. After tonight, we're taking a week off to plan and meet and debrief and talk about the changes we would like to make going forward. As amazing as we feel our event was, we always want to keep the conversation going about ways to make improvements and make next year even better. We look, we look forward to continuing to work with the city and we appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say, I got a whole word to you, so I'll say I am very appreciative because I know creating a welcoming, safe place that's also fun and educational for 3,000 peoples no easy task, so I'm grateful for all the board members and all the volunteers. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Nick Rogers, I'm a deacon at Bible Believers Church in our mall. I was just making, I'd like to make an appeal for the noise ordinance. I've got a couple, some papers to hand out. To the council members. There's a copy of Grand Rapids and Lowell, might I have this? And maybe, maybe, who would be best to give them to? I've got six copies.
I probably should have a copy.
One's in the interim.
I have two more.
You have two more?
You have two more, I'm sorry.
We'll share.
Oh, great.
Grand Rapids.
Grand Rapids affects me much longer than that.
Well, I'm just going over a couple sections. All right. Let's, mostly with value, but we're, everyone tonight, we are on the street corner by the cell station for, or by the VP now actually, for public evangelism. And we would like to be able to have a, use sound amplification. The Grand Rapids ordinance has recently been challenged and has been changed to where it is allowed to be used for a public address. Lowell has a, has a similar thing where you're allowed to use it during a public address, but it's only, it's restricted to the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, which is business hours. We feel this is just a little restrictive and would just like to make an appeal to have that changed to the mirror of Grand Rapids. And our amplification, it's, it's very low key. Honestly, the way we raise our voices is not any louder than that. If anything, I'd say it's less crude than us just raising our voices and it's more clear. But I'd like to have that changed to, to the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And also, we feel that it'd be more appropriate to have the level of noise be at the level of where it's conversational at 100 feet. The current, the way the policy is currently written for Lowell, it is, it's written to where it's inaudible at 100 feet. But you can hear us raise our voices from 100 feet away. So, so that, if you could look at those concerns for us, that would be much appreciated. Thank you very much.
My name is Josh Lingdon, I'm one of the pastors at Bible Believers Church, a visioning as a deacon here. And I'm coming forward tonight to discuss some concerns that occurred at the Pride event here on Saturday in Lowell. So this is the third, the third annual Pride event. The first two events, people from our church showed up to preach the gospel as well. The first event was incredibly unruly. Saturday's event was much better, we had the support of some Lowell officers that were there to help keep the peace. And I just wanted to go over my concerns. First of all, our purpose, preaching, is not to antagonize, we don't just preach at Pride events. I'll go to Christian concerts at Van Andel and preach the gospel. We just want to get out the message of the gospel of Jesus Christ and is it in conflict with the message that the Pride LGBT crowd believes? But we preach, the Great Commission says, to go into all the world and preach the gospel to every creature. So as obedient Christians and as loving Christians, believing that there's an eternal hell and an eternal heaven, there's a lot at stake. And so we do this because we love people, not because we hate people. At least that's, that's my heart honor. But my concern with the Pride event is that there is a lot of illegal activity that's going on at, at the Pride event. First of all, Section 13 dash 131 in the Lowell code says that indecent or obscene language is not lawful within the city. To use indecent or obscene language. Section 13 dash 132 says that it should be unlawful for any person within the city to engage in any indecent or obscene conduct in any public place. We wore body cams this year because we wanted to have proof of, not only for accountability for us, to show what we do and what we don't do, but in case these kinds of things happen. Last year, people were flashing themselves with teenagers, my teenagers present. And while we didn't catch any of that conduct this year, what we did see was pornography in the Noddy Boutique tent that was facing the central aisle. And my main concern is that this is available to the public, so a child, an eight-year-old child from down the road could, could show up without his or her parents. And pornography shouldn't be readily available. And I do have a video of that that I'll be, that I'll be giving to the police chief to review. There were flyers that were handed out and I don't want to show these to the rest of the, to the rest of the, I'm going to give this to the council members. Of course, this is offensive to me, but I also want to make clear that this isn't about restricting free speech. I believe in LGBT's crowd being able to say what they believe, just like, just like Christians. The time may come where pastors are thrown in prison again for preaching the gospel, but I'm not trying to restrict speech, but I do believe that as leaders in the community, that it's your responsibility and mine to protect children, minors, from this type of thing. This to me is disgusting, it's vile.
Amen.
And whether or not you're a Christian, it should not be out in the public sphere, being handed out at a public event. There were many F-bombs being dropped on the speaker from the stage. I don't know if there are any children in here, but there's one of the drag queens in particular. I'm going to play just a short clip for you. And this may be funny to some people, but the question is whether or not this should be allowed in the public sphere. And my answer to that is, is absolutely not. So what can the community do to protect children from this type of content? This should not be going on with the city's blessing. And I don't know what Lowell will do with this. To be honest with you, that's not my primary purpose. I wish, I, I've been preaching the gospel in public for 25 years and in my experience, this crowd of people have this track record. They have their own security, they don't want local cops running the security for these reasons. They bring people in that are, that are on their side. And Grand Rapids protesters, preachers are frequently assaulted. Last year, paint was thrown at them. We continue to go because we love the gospel, we love Jesus Christ, and we love people. I'm thankful for the support of the Lowell police chief and his officers in helping keep the peace. But I just want Lowell to know that as a Bible-believing pastor here in Lowell, as long as this continues, I will be there to voice dissent biblically and to preach the gospel. And my hope is that if this does continue, it'll continue in a way that doesn't open up children to abuse. And I would just like to read one passage from the scriptures and I'll get down. Matthew 18 verse 6 says, "Whoso shall offend one of these little ones, which believe in me, it were better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck, and that he were drowned in the depth of the sea." As community leaders, we have a responsibility to protect children. These are Jesus Christ's words. And I hope that you'll help me do that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Lu and I live at 803 North Monroe Street. Three years ago, I had the privilege of attending the first year of Lowell Pride. Last year, I not only attended, but also volunteered. And this year, I was blessed to have been given the opportunity to sit on the board and help make Lowell Pride happen. Three years of growth, and I'm not talking about Lowell Pride or even Lowell, although I am happy to see that there's been significant growth in this town. I'm talking about myself. Lowell Pride has played a huge part in my life the last few years and is the reason why I was finally able to feel comfortable enough to come out in a place like Lowell. A place like Lowell, why does it need to be said this way? Huh, if you were at our event between the hours of 3:00 PM and 5:30 PM that day, it would have been obvious. Protesters from a local church decided to walk into our event where they initially stood by the stage, where they yelled, brandished their signs, which unfortunately hit more than a couple of our attendees, and attempted to converse with children who were walking without an adult to let them know that their clearness would cause them to burn in hell, all while shoving their body cameras in their faces. The level of noise the protesters were making at such a close proximity to the main stage caused us to have to push our poetry back. My youngest poet from our own community came to me in tears because they were afraid of the protesters and what they might do. Luckily, the Lowell Police Department responded quickly to our call and they were able to get the protesters to move from our vendor spaces. I just want to say thank you to our police department for supporting us in that moment and sticking around to ensure everyone stays safe. The protesters moved to the bleachers while most of them held signs, a couple took their cameras and moved throughout the crowd. Pride is supposed to be about love, support, and acceptance. It angered me to see those protesters walking around recording people. My community showed up because they thought we were providing a safe place where they could be themselves. And I take on the responsibility that I failed some of them. Because some are now going to be used in these protesters discussing propaganda. They are being portrayed as the faces of those who are broken, that's disgusting. Broken is the last word I would ever use to describe my beautiful family. We just want to be able to exist. I fully expect any of the videos they took of our event to portray us in the worst possible light. I understand that was their goal, to rile us up and then make our community seem dangerous and horrible. While many didn't give in to their temptation and engage, some others did, even with the frequent reminders from the main stage to not do so. I do not condone any of the behaviors for those that chose to engage. For as much as we knew the protesters were not going to change our minds, they were not there to have their mind changed by us either. I want people in Lowell to know that I'm sitting on the Board for Lowell Pride not to cause drama or depress any kind of lifestyle onto others. We in the LGBTQ+ community are just looking to be accepted, to feel safe being ourselves. I'm here to be that voice that I so desperately needed while I was a closeted student at LAF. I would love the opportunity to be able to sit down with city council and discuss any concerns that you may have going forward, as well as other ideas we have for moving forward. Our theme for this year was proud to be our neighbor. I meant that, our board meant that. We are proud to be here and we want what's best for our city. I will not stand here and pretend that we're faultless, but as a newer board member, I am eager to grow and to learn. I want to have constructive conversations so I learn how we can best move forward, being the best neighbors we can possibly be for this community. Thank you.
My name is Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. I came tonight to just say one thing, and now I'm going to say several things. The one thing, the one thing was, I wanted to sit, got our water bill this week and there was a Lowell flyer in their newsletter. I thought it was very well done, it was very informative. Kudos whoever put that together and I believe that, you know, Mike and the city council. It was, I thought it was well done, that's what I had to say. On this issue, do I appreciate the language? No, I don't. But I... I grew up attending the Methodist church here in Lowell and Sunday School and also the Congregational Church. I can remember singing, "Jesus Loves You." I don't know the Bible very well, but I'm going to say my God is a loving God. And I get upset, I get upset with this group when I'm driving downtown and going down and I'm in a vehicle and I feel maybe that's their style, but I'm being screamed at and you're going to go to hell, you know, and all this stuff. And again, I don't appreciate that. I believe God loves everybody. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dustin Lynn Smith, I reside in Scottsfield, East Cape. I am head of security for Lowell Pride. One of the reasons why we don't employ Lowell police is because they're busy doing things for the community as a whole and shouldn't be required to sit in one spot to ensure that people remain decent to each other. That's one of the reasons why I do it. I have a history in law enforcement, that's my current profession. I have personally witnessed what happens when people have the intention to cause issue. That's what I witness every year with certain attendees. I'm well aware of what a First Amendment-protected activity is and what that looks like. I've dealt with it before in official capacity. And that's what happens when people wear body cams and have the intention of eliciting a reaction from people. That's what I witnessed. Also, what I witnessed, and I'm sure you will not on the video that's provided, were adults, 30 to 40-year-olds, 30 to 40-years-old, using their signs to rub and push on minors. I saw that. I stepped in.
Well, they let you guys talk, you're going to let them talk.
I stepped in to ensure that, for lack of a better term, our people were respectful to personal boundary. Said, "Do not touch, do not instigate, try to keep your flags that they're flying to try to block out the message of hate from touching them. Don't give them any ground," I said. To some of their people, I said, "Hey, I'm trying to be respectful of you, please be respectful to us. Try not to touch, try not to push, try not to encroach on people's personal space." That's why I was there. Nobody got hurt, apart from some scuff knees, a little bit of dehydration. And that is on part for everybody that was there, the volunteers, did an amazing job. I'm sure you will get material that shows how some portray what we did and the evils of it. But we all know what happens when people use digital media to convey a specific viewpoint. You will also hear in the background, hopefully, the message of, "Love is love." That was screamed by minors as they were accosted by adults with a very harsh message of, "You will be going to hell for what you are." And they will say they didn't say that. They did. I was there all day with them to ensure they didn't get hurt or hurt others, because that's my job. Thank you.
My name is Bethany Langdon, Joshua is my husband. We got, we were told on Saturday, I'm from Bible Believers Church also. We were told on Saturday by many people that we were hateful. Hate was what was driving us, hate was what sent us down there to the park. I wanted to dispel those doubts, there is not enough hate in the world that could cause me to subject myself to what occurred on Saturday. There's not enough hate that could let me leave my young kids with grandparents, take my teens with me, not for a day of fun in the sun, but to be ridiculed, to be screamed at, to be sworn at, to have obscene gestures done. at, to have obscene gestures done at us. You couldn't pay me enough. You couldn't pay me enough. And there's not enough hate, but love is stronger. And I'm talking about biblical love here. The love that I have for each person in this room, the love that I had for each person that was at that event on Saturday, drag queen or not, I have love for them in that they are fellow human. And I love them and I want them to experience true love that I have found through my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. By knowing Him in a personal way. I'm a wife. I'm a mother. I'm a teacher. I was a foster parent. Now I'm an adoptive parent. I'm a soccer coach. Most of my life is spent working with children, serving children. And it broke my heart on Saturday, I'm shaking, it broke my heart to watch the children being defiled and polluted by vulgar acts and obscenities, by profanity, by pornography.
Amen.
In a public park.
Cottles.
That's all I have to say. Can I talk again? Settle off.
Represented an organization before.
I was an organization now. Can I talk as a person?
You can represent yourself absolutely.
Okay. I am a deeply religious Christian person and have been attending church for fifty-one years. I spend an enormous amount of time loving Jesus, loving God. And there is nothing more important than embracing people for who they are. The God and the Jesus that I believe in does not tell anyone they are unworthy for being the person that they are inside. And that's exactly why I have supported Lowell Pride for three years and will continue to do so. Thank you.
I am Joshua's father. I'm one of the pastors of Bible Believers Church. I've heard a lot about love in the last twenty to thirty minutes. In the Bible, the Lord says, "I love them that love me." It is easy to create another Jesus or another spirit or another gospel. It's warned about in Galatians chapter one. So you and I can create any Jesus we want to believe in or to claim we love. There's only one Jesus and that's the Jesus of the Bible. And the Bible says, "The Lord personifies wisdom," says, "I love them that love me." The Bible says, "God, for God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believed in him," the Jesus of the Bible, "should not perish but ever lest he truth, ever lest he life, and truth. Jesus is the way, the truth, and the life." So Jesus Christ is the way. The problem is, this is the fifth Pride event we've been to. We're not novices. We're not neophytes. I've heard a lot of disingenuity and misinformation, what I used to call lies, but those words, lies, not accepted anymore today. These things that are said that we did, we did not do. My son be giving a body camera to the chief of police here. If this community, if Lowell wants this to continue, it will continue. If Lowell wants filth, unrighteousness, dirt, and immoral debauchery, it will continue. If that's what you, men and women, want, you're in power. We're not. If it continues, we'll continue to go down there till the Lord tells us not to. And we've been doing this for twenty-two years, as far as the public ministry goes. The Bible says, "I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God into salvation to everyone that believes it, to the Jew first and also to the green." God is indiscriminate. Everybody here needs the gospel. Everybody's a sinner. I told so many people Saturday, you're not special or unique sinners. I'm a sinner, you're a sinner. Yes, you're going to hell. So was I until I was twenty-two years old. And so is everybody behind that wooden wall there if you're not born to get or saved. I'm almost done. Jesus, Jesus, the Jesus of the Bible, not a Jesus that somebody in this room is creating for their own liking. Jesus said, "Go ye unto all the world and preach the gospel to every creature." I close with this. The prophet Isaiah, one of the greatest prophets in the Bible, said, "Wish them to call evil good and good evil." What went on Saturday, I am seventy years old. I've been a physician for over forty years, a pastor for over twenty. What went on Saturday is dirty and is wicked and is wrong.
Sir, can I get your name for the record, please?
Charles Michael Langdon. I'll introduce you.
Can I speak?
Hold on, let's close. Do we have anybody else for public comment? Okay, then we're gonna officially close public comment. You wanna go before Lowell Business? Go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna ask you for permission to speak to your daughter. I know you weren't a private speaker and nothing they say is true. I want you to hear that and feel that. Nothing about this beginning was dirty. Okay? Don't let adults and what they believe, whether it's this or that, get to dictate who you are or who your friends are or who this society is. Second, we each have the power to choose what fuels our love. Some of us believe in Jesus Christ and that is fine. I will do my due diligence every single day of my life to protect your right to practice your religion. And you get to show up on public property and you get to say what you will, but that's between you and your Jesus. And what I do is between mine and mine. You don't get to tell me it's right or wrong. You say yourself, Jesus makes that decision. So don't come here and tell me I'm not allowed to believe in something or support something because you think it's dirty because your Jesus says something. I get to choose and I get to take it up with Jesus or God or whoever my higher power is. That's my right. And if you wanna take that away from me, then we're gonna have problems. You're not. Come to public property. Have your protests? That's fine. I actually think it's great when children can see peaceful protests. That should be an example that they see in the world, that they are allowed to have a voice no matter who agrees with them. Don't come to my Lowell and tell kids that they are dirty. Sound okay? It's not okay. And you know better as adults.
We have a right to respond. Well, no? 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 We're done doing that. Thank you. That was awesome. Lowell Business number eight, master plan update.
In the upcoming fiscal year, the city would like to begin updating the master plan. The Planning Enabling Act requires for the city to review the plan every five years, which we have done. However, it's been approximately fifteen years since there have been any revisions made to it. The city is at the point where it is necessary to make revisions to the plan. Our planning consultant, Williams and Works, prepared a proposal to assist us with all phases of the process, which includes the proper public notices, community profiling, community engagement, future land analysis, working with the planning commission of the city council, along with the draft process and implementation. The cost for all aspects of the proposal is forty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and was budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year. We believe this will be a twelve to eighteen month process with involvement from the community, planning commission, and the city council. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve the master plan proposal with Williams and Works' cost not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
Already budgeted for, right?
Correct.
Just what Gary talked about?
Correct.
One of the many steps?
Correct.
Any questions for Mike?
When do we start on this?
So I think that's when we work with Williams and Works, another planning on having two community events, concerts, some community engagement. But I know once we get approved, Williams and Works is gonna start getting started.
It sounded like fall. We're gonna get started and it'll be eighteen months. We have a board on planning that has been together now quite a while. So it's not like we have to bring somebody new up to speed with what's going on. It should be, I'm actually looking forward to it. So it'll be cool. Would you? Okay. Motion to accept the Williams and Works master plan proposal. Will I make that motion?
I'll support.
Any other discussion or questions? Sue.
Mayor Navore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sosmido?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
All right. Resolution thirteen twenty-three, a resolution that was put together from our compensations commission discussion last meeting.
At the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting, the compensation committee has added their changes to city council compensation. And a resolution has been prepared for that. Resolution thirteen twenty-three to approve the recommendations made by the compensation committee. Technically, the city council does not have to approve the determination from the compensation commission. It is not required by ordinance or Michigan statute. However, the council can disapprove the recommendation with a two-third vote and the compensation in place remains. And there is no disapproval determination because automatic, becomes automatic as a matter of law. That being said, it doesn't hurt to approve via resolutions to record keeping function and to keep up the commission's determination as it was drafted more of a recommendation. Not providing a recommendation as this is an issue amongst the council, policy issue amongst the council. That being said, I did reach out to Roger Lawere. If you have any questions, feel free. He's here tonight. But there were a couple of questions that I wanted to make sure were clarified and I'm gonna just go over those with you. So as part of the, as part of what was presented, you had thirty-five meetings. And the question was whether or not work sessions were included as part of those meetings and also whether or not if you go to your boards and commission meetings, if those count towards your thirty-five meetings. So when we have work sessions, you would have, that would count towards your thirty-five meetings, but any board and commission meeting would not. The other, the other thing that we did want to seek for clarification was the stipend pertaining to the elected officials category. So in essence, the stipend, the dollar amount stipend would happen once you complete a level. It wouldn't count, you wouldn't get the stipend for taking classes to build your level. It's the year you make that level, that's the year you get the stipend. That being said, this is kind of a starting point to try and see how this works in the next couple of years. And this is really kind of a new thing. So this is something that if needs to be modified the next time the compensation commission meets, it's something they would be glad to look at.
So the individual boards that we're sitting on, they decide our compensation with the rest of the board members?
Depends on the board because technically, I believe, the only boards that get paid are the planning commission and the like power board. And I don't know if you get paid.
I do not.
Okay. So if you get paid as a planning commission, okay. So then the council members don't get paid.
But yeah, Jim can't vote and I can.
I can vote without the same authority?
With my power. Jim is the liaison in the city and the planning commission. I'm also that, but I am a voting member when it comes to setting for policy for planning.
I don't, I don't know for certain, but I do know I believe the planning and zoning, planning enabling act dictates that. So where the like power board is an internal board of a city and doesn't apply to some of the statutes that might apply.
Plan is available?
I will say, I've been to like power and they have pizza and popcorn. Planning is never catered. The Parks Board, the liaison or the person in the charter also, that's the council member is a voting member on Parks Commission.
But I cannot vote on Chambers. So it's the same.
All right. Any other questions? I'd like to thank obviously Roger and both Teresa's and Barb. I know it's a tall order to come back from trying to gather all that information up from the last however many years. I don't remember, two thousand seventeen or something was the last minutes we could find, Suzy, right? So it's been a long time. So motion then to approve the compensation commission resolution thirteen twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Sosmido?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor Navore?
Yes. Number B, River Trail Road Closure.
Grant, second doc is here tonight to, they're closing classes, making.
Hello, everyone. My name is Frank Hemsba. I reside at seven two-two North Hudson Street. I am the event coordinator for the River Trail Triathlon. Tonight, I am requesting closure of the River Walk or at least some sort of supervision over it to ensure safety for the participants as well as public members, as well as number two on their list, that I'm from Lincoln.
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma property of kayaks. Thank you very much. Yes. So as well as using that property adjacent to the library, just sort of kayaks after they're done racing in the water.
Just for the day of, on vote?
Yeah. And it would be like nine AM to noon for both requests.
Can I ask a question? As a participant of it, like are you gonna have a bike area to put on bikes, like where our kayaks go?
Yep. So we're, I've worked with actually a father and we've agreed with different bike rack solutions. So everything will be logistically organized that way as well. And we'll have people help bring kayaks out of the water so you don't have to carry your own kayak.
Oklahoma thing looks pretty straightforward to me, but closing the River Walk from, from here to the boat launch, you have it closed?
So I just want it to be the most safe event that it can be for participants and for spectators. I would absolutely welcome spectators to come and be there. My biggest concern is when they turn onto Main Street here, you know, it's kind of a blind corner if you're on a bike. So I just don't want any.
Okay. So they're finishing it on a bike.
They, so they're going from kayaking and then from the boat launch, they're taking their bikes down the River Walk. And then they're gonna head west on West Main Street and then they're gonna head south on the Water Street. So then when they come back around and do their loop, they'll also be using Main Street on the way back and they're going on the River Walk.
So it's an entrance and an exit to the rest of that?
And a transition, right?
Well, that makes sense if they're on bicycles to close it down.
So anything to make it, like I said.
Yeah. Could you verify that whether or not they have an event on a showboat that they have?
Great, great question.
They don't have that. I'm the president, but I don't know if we have it rented. I believe we do, but it might be in the evening. So it might be okay.
Okay. Absolutely. I have my due diligence there. But again, it's nine AM to noon. Just, yeah.
Even if they're a busy event, I feel like we could come up with a barricading situation where we can be ready for people appropriately.
Yep, I agree.
They're walking from the showboat to the bathroom, they can just stop the bicycle.
I think you can have an answer for us.
There, on June seventeen, there's a showboat event from eleven to three PM.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yes, we need to do some sort of.
And actually, now that I think of it, let me pull up my times. So my estimated duration for kayaking, I'm hoping the last person gets out of the water by, after forty-five minutes. And then the longest bike ride I would assume would be eighty-five minutes. So you're looking at.